Everything rolling, Jen? Well, shall we? Thirty seconds to go, should we go?
Sure.
All right, cool. All right, good evening, everyone. It is January 12th, 2021, Happy New Year. Like to call to order, let's see, almost six o'clock, like to call to order the City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This is an extension of our regular meeting from last month. And Jen, would you, nope, let's go to the Zoom thing first. The webinar ID for tonight's meeting is eight one three four one five two nine seven seven one. And phone number, if you want to call in is one two five three five eight seven eight two. Yes, I think that's it. Excellent, Jen, would you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Zipperly. Commissioner Grosscap. Here. Commissioner Schacter. Commissioner Whissing.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
You have quorum.
Excellent, thank you, Jen. And as always, before we go into our planning items, comments from citizens that are appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. And if you're here, raise your hand. Usually I see none, I see none tonight, so we're moving on to our continued item on the agenda tonight. It is Planning File 5920, Consideration of a Special Use Permit to Allow Accessory Outdoor Storage. And I think Emery's here to give us an update.
Thanks, Marco, and it looks like the applicant has been promoted. Thanks, Jen. So again, just a refresher, so this was a continued from the December 15th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for the consideration of special use permit. I will just share my screen here quick and give a brief presentation to refresh sure for everyone, I think most of you were here the last meeting, just a second. Okay, so again, this was for a consideration for a special use permit for accessory outdoor storage. And the proposed accessory outdoor storage is to be the use of three temporary storage containers on the Big O Tire property at five one zero. As recommendation of staff to approve the special use permit with findings and conditions on page six of the staff report. So again, the location is five one zero seven nine highway six and twenty four. The existing building is approximately 5,000 square feet on a nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot lot. And the use is Big O Tires Auto Repair Store. So again, then we have the neighboring uses, so Glenwood Springs Mall, the property is zoned, it's part of the Glenwood Springs Mall PUD. So there's a couple of retail, drive through bank off east, which recently applied for conversion to marijuana retail, so a mix of uses. So the current proposal, and this was discussed at the previous meeting, so existing at the time of application were containers A and B. In the proposal, container B will be removed, and then containers A, C, and D, forty feet long, will be placed at that location for this tire storage. It will be twenty one point five feet from the property line to the east. And then per code, a screening fence forty-four feet wide would be on the south part of the property. And in the previous meeting, it was also discussed that the applicant was considering making the fence even longer for additional screening, but what is shown here is what would be determined as outdoor storage area. So here are the code references, so again, we have code defense would have to be six feet tall in height and provide a permanent opaque around screen. And then the second code references for the temporary storage containers being designated as accessory outdoor storage, which requires the special use permit, and is the reason for the application. So the special use permit review criteria, the application staff determined that it met these criteria, so the first one being these is compatible with the surrounding area. There is a mix of uses in the surrounding area in five one two, five one zero two seven highway six. And so again, staff found these to be compatible, we minimized, so again, the containers will be screened from the public right way to south of the property as required by code. Three, the use will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code. It is not consistent. The use will comply with all applicable standards of this code. Again, this application was a result of a code violation and applicant has worked with staff to create an application that meets all applicable requirements of municipal code. The use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, other city plans and policies. So it's not specifically addressed in the comprehensive plan. But consolidating the storage containers into one area would be direct development into a compact form. And again, building on Glenwood Springs role as regional goods and services center, auto repair stores, serve the region in the addition of the the addition services to the region. And again, the use minimizes adverse impacts to the health and welfare, so again, the containers will be screened from the public right away, minimize visual impact. And the application will adhere to applicable building code and fire code requirements minimizing adverse impacts. And so the reviewing agencies, in particular, the fire department requested that if the three containers were approved as represented in the application, that the containers meet the following conditions. The first is that the three containers would be vented, so on each container, there'd be two vents, in this case, one would be on the north end, and then on the south end, south end of the container, and that's just to allow airflow to provide a pressure release in case of fire, that's to prevent explosion. And so that was, that's one condition that the fire department stated would be required if this application were approved. And the second is that each container be outfitted with what is called a deluge sprinkler system. So it's a sprinkler system that has open sprinkler heads. So the pipes are not filled with water or pressurized air, which is air, the same pressure as surrounding it. And this system is designed so that if there were a fire, the fire department would be able to connect to this system and pump water through. So again, these two items, and they're listed on page six with the findings and conditions for approval. So as far as adjacent property comments, at the time of the meeting on December 15th, no comments had been received. No comments were received between the first meeting and this meeting. And then again, like I said before, staff recommends with approval with conditions of action item one with findings and conditions on page six of the staff report. So I will stop sharing my screen here. And that concludes the presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Emery. Any questions to staff from the commission? We'll see none, thank you. Would the applicant care to give us an update, or is everything already been said?
I don't have anything additional to add, thank you.
Thank you very much, any additional questions to the applicant at this point? Let's see, we'll start with Commissioner Zipperly, please.
I'm not able to hear anything.
I cannot hear you, Carolyn. Still nothing.
Carolyn, are you able to link your phone? You can go to the little carrot that's by the mute button, and then you can like call in, I think you can.
All right, well, we'll, we'll fall back on you when you're connected, I think Commissioner Grosscap raised her hand. No?
Sure, so should I go ahead, Marco?
Yeah, please, please do.
I don't know how to get my hand off. There it goes. So I just had one question for you, Lori, and thank you for being here again. The question I had is, I think we, I just wanted to remind myself what you talked about doing with the length of the fence. And I just, it, looking at that picture again, that just doesn't seem like forty-four feet, so could you just describe again what your intentions are, please?
Sure, so the forty-four feet that the city was asking the fence length to me would be from the southeast corner of the property directly west to measure up to the very east part of our building, which is would cover the three seven-foot containers plus the twenty-one feet of driving space. What the mall has asked of us that we've agreed to do is extend that fence farther west to the west end of our building. So it would it would be parallel to our building, so the fence wouldn't actually intersect with the building, but the width of it would go to the west end of our building.
And so is that, that's got to be a lot more.
It is, it's pretty significant, our building's pretty wide, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just
You're welcome.
For the record too, so thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Zipperly, please. I still can't hear you.
I'm wondering if she's one of the telephone numbers. Aha, I can't see that, which one, nineteen thirty-seven?
Oh.
How about that? She's muted, star nine, I think. Carolyn, can you, you, you should be able to talk if you hit star nine.
Just write it all down on a piece of paper and we'll read it, you know, what you just did. Any other questions while we're dealing with this technical issue here?
I have, Carolyn, I have, you should be allowed to talk, I think you have to hit star nine. Star nine, that's not right?
Jen, sometimes it's star six in
Star six.
Areas that I work on, so I don't know why.
There.
Aha, there we go, thanks for the help.
Sorry, guys. I would like to agree with Catherine about the length of the fence, maybe wanting to adjust to maybe meet the southeast corner. And I noticed with the containers that there are presently those three containers sitting there, though we have yet to approve this, and it doesn't look as though there's a twenty-one foot wide driving path along the east side of the building any longer.
Hey, thank you.
I'll have to confirm that twenty-one feet, my understanding is that there is twenty-one feet there, but I haven't been up there personally to review that. Regarding those three containers, you're correct that they are all there currently, and that's something we added during this process, partially because container A that you saw on the map that was located on the southwest corner, that's not actually on our property, but it was on property that we leased from the mall parking spaces, our agreement with them was to remove that by the end of the year, and we thought this would all be wrapped up in December, and we would have the approval then, so we went ahead and removed it per agreement with the mall and added those other storage containers over there, and then updated our application accordingly. So you're correct that those three containers are there currently while we're going through the process.
So was access around the east side of the building something you were trying to maintain? It seems as though there's an electric utility at that southeast corner, and with the containers there, it looks like it's pretty tight to get through, especially if parking remains as is shown.
Yes, you're correct, and I don't know if Martine has dialed in, and I don't know if you might be able to add him, his, the last four of his phone is six five two three. He might be able to expand on that a little bit more. On the southeast corner of your property, of the property, you're correct, there's maybe what is electric utility, but there's also some used storage containers there as well, but that should be farther south than where the containers sit. But Martine, are you able to expand on that with the driving space with the three containers there now? Is there twenty-one feet or close to that and access for full driving through there like we had planned? And you might have to star six to unmute yourself. It's star six, right, not pound six?
I think it's star six, yeah.
Our six. There he goes.
All right, all right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so with the three containers right there on that east side of the building, so that's about twenty-one feet from all three, and then we have about an extra eight to nine feet from the last container to the cage junk tires, and there is access to the back's area from the coming in from the west side of that building, so there's still access to get back there with a utility truck if needed.
So I think that space on the east side is forty-four feet total, there's three seven-foot containers, and then, you know, maybe right around twenty feet if there's a little bit of space between each one. Thank you.
Commissioner Zipperly, did that answer your question? Okay, excellent. Anything else? I just want to, well, I need, I need to point this out, but I'm looking at your plan view here, and it looks like your building might be about a hundred and twenty feet long. And if you add that whole side of the building for your fence, you're looking at a hundred and sixty-six feet of fencing. If I understood this correctly, if you're going to go to the west corner.
That may be correct, yes, I haven't looked at what the actual distance is, but that west side of the building all the way to the east end of the property. And that's quite possible, but you're correct.
That's, that's a lot of fencing, I'm not necessarily in favor of that.
Okay.
How, I understand a private entity asked you to do this, but can we allow this? That's a lot of fencing without breakup in it. What, what, what does our code say, you can just put up a fence however long you want, Emery?
So it would be, okay, so first off, the required fence would be the forty-four feet. And that would just have to meet code with the material. As far as location and design, I mean, that's their property line.
I'm sorry, you were breaking up, I didn't hear the end of it.
So it would be required to be, you know, meet the material part thing, I mean, it's a property fence. Did you hear?
For, for the forty-four feet, but if they want to add a hundred and twenty feet of fencing, I assume it's six feet high, that's perfectly fine on that
Correct, that would be a property, I mean, it would have to, like I said, be compatible with this approved segment, fence materials, so you know, with the chain link, you know, it would have to be natural stone brick, stucco wood from the list.
I would like to add, we would prefer not to run fence along the whole south side there, it is a lot of fence, and I, you know, we do have some landscaping there, and I think having some visibility to the business is good as well. We want to also be good neighbors to our partners, and so we would be in agreeance to doing that if it would help, you know, keep our neighbors and the mall happy who were have been partners with for a while, but if you were to say that we couldn't do that, we, you know, we would be okay with the forty-four as well.
Well, it, it sounds like I cannot say that I don't want the fence there. That's what it sounds like, which is a total bummer, because in my opinion, if you got a viable business there, and you got a busy business there, and looking at, looking at busyness to me is much more attractive than looking at wood slats going across for a hundred and sixty feet. I just, I am not in favor of you guys. You know, the mall sits, I don't know, three hundred feet further back, why would they even ask you to do this? I don't, I don't understand. So I'd have another discussion with them and say, listen, the forty-four feet, I mean, if you want to extend it another, you know, ten feet and go to fifty-five, so you cover that corner on the east, I could see that, but the whole length, I'm not in favor of that. I think I said that last time too, you're replacing one surface with another unsightly surface, and I just don't think that makes sense.
And so that brings up a great point that I would like to ask as well, then, if we chose not to extend it farther, it would be within our right to be able to do so then, maybe they would be unhappy, but there would be nothing binding us to do that even with their request then, is that correct?
From what I understand, and Emery can, can definitely confirm this, the forty-four feet is what you're required to do because that's what you're asking for, and we say, we may say yes to this tonight. But anything else is completely up to you.
Okay.
Emery, do you have something to add?
Yeah, Marco, I just wanted to just confirm that, you know, the, the part where the application where we looked at was it needed to screen the containers, and we felt that from the corner, the southeast corner of the property line, to even with the building, provided adequate enough screening, because once you get past that point, you have the retail building to the east that blocks your view, and then also the big old tire that blocks your view coming from basically the west direction, so we've that is the distance for the screening fence. And then I also wanted to add, I just, based on your question, with a fence that is set to the public right away, it has to be sixty percent transparent, so if that additional fencing would be added, it would be a different visually. But again, what is required for this application is the forty-four feet, anything beyond that is pretty much the choice of big O in the applicant, so.
Thank you, thank you, Emery, so, so again, and, and I know this is, this, we're just looking at the forty-four feet, but big O, save, save your money for that rest, and, and maybe put a few bushes in, do a little landscaping in front of that wooden fence. That serves all of us, and, and you got three trees there that shield the building, put a few bushes in between, I think you're much better served than putting up some sort of a privacy fence kind of thing, so. Anyway, I'll stop at that, but I got, I got other hands up here, and we'll start with Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thanks, Marco. As my recollection correct, that there was some discussion about running the fence from the southwest corner toward the east a certain distance at one time. Does anybody remember that conversation? Or is that my imagination running wild?
Was that with this application, or was this the storage container code amendment that we talked about later on that night?
Well, I was thinking it was this discussion. But I, you know, from a practical standpoint, I would make the, the argument that it would make sense to maybe go to that first tree from the southwest corner, let the tree function as partial break, and then go maybe to the next tree. When, you know, if you're looking straight over at the containers ninety degrees to that fence, you know, the forty-four feet is going to block your view. But that's not the way people look at things, it's like looking at the, the north elevation of a building on a drawing. It's, it's a perspective that just never gets seen in the real, real world. You know, if, if, if the goal is to screen these things, I would, I would say, consider going to those first trees, I agree with you, Marco, that there's no benefit to go the whole length. And, and perhaps you can achieve the same thing with, with landscaping. I think not, but, but I would say some combination of additional to the forty-four feet and landscaping would, would solve the problem, and still allow you to see the business as you're driving by, but screen the containers.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions? Thought I saw other hands up, but they were lowered, oh, Commissioner Grosscap, please.
And well, I think my overall feedback is that I know it's in our code, and, and Emery's done a great job here. It just does feel sort of like a fence that's going to have no friends on either side, and it's just going to be sort of a strange experience to have a, a tall solid fence. If there's somebody here with a creative solution, or if Emery, you looked at that and got comfortable, I'd appreciate hearing it, but I mean, I was sort of thinking, some ways it makes sense to even have it a little longer, because then it doesn't seem so weird, but maybe there's no there's no answer to the requirement.
Thank you. Just, just real quick, I like that when I looked at the plan view, it went from the, I guess it's the southeast corner to the first tree. That's what, that's what it feels like to me, it looks like, so it could belong there, especially if there's a few pieces of landscaping in front of that. It could feel like screening, but it could also feel like, oh, look, they're, you know, trying to do something with the landscaping, but Emery, what do you, what do you got?
Okay, so to answer your question, I think there's a couple of questions, you had mentioned other options to screen, so per code to fit, to excuse me, screen an outdoor storage area, an outdoor storage area must be screened using a combination of fences, walls, berms, or landscaping that is at least six feet in height, and provides a permanent opaque year round screen. And the difficulty with using landscaping for screening here would be the irrigation in the year-round part, and so wood fence was what was used in the application, and then as far as where that fence is, where that first tree is, if you look at the plan view, and it's hard to tell where the corner of the building is in relation to that first tree, but they're going to be at about probably the same point, give or take a couple of feet from what I see.
Thank you. So I guess final thought, all we really need you to do is the forty-four feet. And we'll leave it up to you if, if, if you agree to additional fencing. And we'll leave it up to you if, if, if you agree to additional fencing. If you could add landscaping, that'd be nice. If not, 44 feet is all we're asking. Em, Emery, please.
I, I just wanted to add too, is that one of the conditions is that the applicant submit an improvement location survey after the fence, so we can see exactly what has been constructed, where everything is, and have that on record if the permanent were approved.
Right, thank you. Okay, excellent. Any, any other questions? No, we'll see. None. Thanks, guys. Anybody from the public? I'll reopen the public portion. Oh, Emery, did we have, we have no other comments. You already mentioned that.
No, no, no comments received.
Okay, excellent. I'll reopen it again quick for the public. Anybody here that would like to comment on this? Raise your hand. I see one hand raised in the attendees panel. And I can't see the phone number.
I think that's Carolyn, actually.
Is that Carolyn? Okay, the 1937.
It's me.
Do you want to, do you have anything to add?
Well, now that I've got your ear, I was thinking that if a small section of fence did go from the southeast corner, return to the north, it would further shield those as you're driving west on Highway 6. But also there's so much industrial development in that part of the woods. I don't feel like it's absolutely critical.
I'll close the public portion at this point and I will bring it back to the commission. Entertaining a motion, let's see if I get this right, and finding item 5920, consideration of a special use permit to allow accessory outdoor storage. And we have one action item and staff is recommending approval. Commissioner Grosscap.
I can make a motion for us. Let's see here. So so for action item 5920, especially years, outdoor I recommend approval with the findings and conditions on page six of this.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I can second.
And a second. Commissioner, we're seeing a second. Excellent. Any, any more discussion? On this item, everybody clear? We're, we're, we have a motion to prove. If I don't see any more discussion, I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscap?
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen. Thanks to the applicant for coming back tonight and playing with us. And thanks, Commissioners and Emery, for getting through this. And let's see, that was our, that was our only fun thing for tonight. Now it's already on to Commissioner's comments and I'll start with Commissioner Shaver.
I don't really have anything to offer tonight except to say Happy New Year to everybody. Hopefully this one's better than the previous. And we all get vaccinated here soon.
Excellent. Thank you, George. Commissioner Whissing?
Happy New Year. Just as a quick FYI, I did reapply for the commission. My commission is up next month. So I guess this may or may not be your last time seeing me, but I guess we'll find out. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Amber. Is, Jen, is, is, would tonight be the last one or February?
We do have one more meeting. It's the 26th.
Oh, right. Of course.
This is just the special one for the voting. So we will have an additional meeting this month.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Commissioner West?
No comments. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Zipperly? Star six. Oh, man.
Have we had any other applications for people interested in sitting on the commission?
So I guess this is the, the time to say that Commissioner Grosscap has served her two full terms. And so her seat has been filled, actually. Beatrice Soto will be taking her seat. And then Pete Waller and, and Joy. I've forgotten her last name.
Joy White?
Joy White. Joy White will be the, the alternates. And we will have interviews for the open seats that will open in February, at the February 4th City Council meeting. So there will be, there's two seats, both Commissioner Shaver and Commissioner Whissing. Their terms are coming up in February.
Well, Mike, Catherine, we're going to miss you. Happy New Year to everyone else amidst all these changes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Grosscap?
My gosh, well, with that. Yeah, I know. I've definitely appreciated this opportunity to be on P and Z. I think there's the one last meeting. I think you said the 26th. I, yes, I welcome the council's recent ordinance. I think it makes sense to get more people involved in our boards. I have lived through times, though, with different boards where there weren't any applicants. So I, I know that things can always change again, but I think it makes sense. I'm really pleased to hear the name that you just mentioned, who would be taking my seat. I think that's a great, a great opportunity for her and also for the city. So otherwise, Happy New Year, everyone. And it's kind of funny to go off in a virtual format, but maybe it will be changing hopefully soon. Thanks.
Thank you. I think that was it for Commissioners. And Jen, anything additionally?
Let's see, the P and Z will have, so City Council is resuming its meeting regularly with the Commissions. So the meeting with P and Z will be March 4th. And it'll be at 3:30-ish. Obviously, all those things get sorted out kind of the week ahead. But if you might circle that on your calendar for the regular kind of conversation, generally they're about 30 to 45 minutes. So they go quick. But a quick check-in with City Council on the first meeting that they have in March. And I think that's all for me.
Hey, excellent.
But I will say, actually, you know, and I know that Commissioner Grosscap will be here on the 26th, hopefully. But it has been a pleasure having you be part of the P and C. So we will miss you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll save all that for the last meeting, otherwise I'm not going to make it through this. But anyway, any other comments from anybody? No, we'll see. None. I got nothing. Thank you very much for showing up for this special meeting and we'll see you guys on the 26th, it was, I think. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Good night.